Good evening and welcome to the May 4, 2021 Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and recite the pledge? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. So first on the agenda tonight, we have a budget hearing, and so I'll turn it over to Neil. Wait, yeah, Neil's there.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. This evening, we're going to be presenting the budget in the form of a budget hearing, and this is a requirement by state law, and we have to do this between seven and 14 days before the actual budget vote takes place. So tonight, we'll be fulfilling that obligation and sharing information with you about the proposed budget for the 2021-2022 school year. So overall, the budget will increase by 1.9 million or 1.89%. Our estimated tax levy increase is 1.28%, and that also applies to any tax rate increases in the various towns. And we'll talk about this a little bit more, but the way the budget is structured, it just requires 50% voter approval for it to pass, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on in another slide. So there are three parts that the state wants us to show in terms of budget categories that they have identified for us. So they require us to show the distribution of expenditures between program expenses, particularly related to the instructional side of the program, capital expenses, and administrative expenses. So as you might imagine, being a school district, the bulk, over three quarters of our budget, is allocated to program costs, and that's meeting the needs of our students. Capital, which is improvements to our facilities in debt from borrowings, that's a much smaller amount, 11.4%, and administration is 11.2%. So we'll walk through each of the components of the budget and give you a flavor for what's contained within there and what the dollars represent. So as you can see at the top, we're going to talk about the program component. We have a comparison between last year and this year in terms of the overall amount of that component, as well as the percentage, and the percentage is almost identical to the previous year in terms of the overall budget. But this is where our salaries and benefits would be for teachers, guidance counselors, aid monitors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, speech therapists, all the individuals that provide services to our children. Also, professional development, library, media, and computer services. Student transportation is in this category, as well as co-curricular activities and inner scholastic athletics. And then we have the administrative component. Again, that's very similar to last year in terms of the overall percent, but this is where you would find costs for our administrators, supervisors, and administrative clerical staff. We also have our public information component that's part of the administrative allocation, central data processing, research planning and evaluation, and then tax collection, and most of our legal services, as well as school board costs. Then finally, the capital component. That's exactly the same percentages in the previous year, and this is for debt on building improvements, school bus purchases, tax challenges, as well as our operations in maintenance department, including our salaries and benefits. In terms of the overall revenue budget, you can see that we did receive a substantial increase in state aid this year, and that's represented in the chart, which was very good for us. We had a little decline in our local revenues, and also, as part of our final budget adoption, we also reduced our reliance on fund balance. So we're taking from our savings to help fund our expenditures, and in this case, we did a good thing in reducing our reliance on our savings to fund our operating expenses. So that's now at zero for next year. Payments and low taxes have gone down as well. Our tax levy, as you can see, is 75.9 million, and our overall budget is one, almost 105 million. In terms of our budgeted revenues and expenses, to show that graphically, on the revenue side, property taxes provide the predominant amount of money for our operations, 72.4%. State aid is another significant chunk at 26%, and then we have some local revenue sources that comprise relatively small amount of 1.6%. In terms of our expenditure budget, our salaries and benefits, being a people business, they comprise the bulk of our expenses, 80%. And then we also have contractual services at 7%, BOCs at 5.6%, debt payments at 4.9%, equipment and supplies at 2.2%, and inter-fund transfers at 0.3%. In terms of our overall impact, we're estimating our tax levy is going to increase by $962,000. That's a 1.28% on both the levy and the tax rate. As you know, many years ago, the state adopted a tax levy limit or property tax cap. So there are some requirements that we have to follow. There is a formula that's established by New York State. It's got eight steps in it. We'll walk through those in a moment. But basically, the idea behind this formula is to increase, to limit the increase in the vast majority of expenses to 2% or less. And the result of that formula really determines the amount that property taxes can increase, and it really sets a threshold for voter approval, and that's ultimately what the goal of this calculation is, to decide whether we need a majority or what we would term a supermajority. So if the tax increase is less than the threshold amount, we, the budget will pass with 50% or more of the voters voting yes. But if it's greater than the threshold amount, we would need to have 60% of the voters voting yes in order to have a pass budget. In either case, whenever a budget is defeated, no increases at all in taxes are permitted. So this is the actual calculation provided by the state with our data inserted in it. So it starts with our prior year tax levy of just about 75 million. There is a tax-based growth factor that's provided by the state. It's really to capture new construction within the school district, and that's at 1.0043. That gets us to our subtotal of 75.3 million. And then we're going to add payment in lieu of taxes from the prior year. So that's about $75,000. Subtracting our capital expenditures, so these are expenditures, but we have to back out the amount of aid that we're receiving for those expenditures. So the net of that is 1.5 million. That brings us to our adjusted prior year tax levy of 73.8 million. We also have an allowable levy growth factor, so this is the CPI factor that everybody's pretty much familiar with. So it's the 2% or less component. So in this case, the CPI was 1.23%, so it was less than 2%, so that's the number that we have to use. So that results in our growth-adjusted tax levy subtotal, 74.8 million. We have next year's pilot inserted into the formula of 47,000. That gets us to what's called the actual tax levy limit amount, 74.7 million. Then we get to add back capital expenditures, again, net of state aid for next year, 1.2 million, and that brings us to our maximum allowable tax levy limit amount of 75.9 million or 1.28%. So in terms of the tax levy limit and the proposed tax levy, they're the same this year, so there is no difference between the tax levy limit and the proposed limit we're right at the maximum. The increase in both cases, $962,403 or 1.28%. And as I mentioned before, that just requires 50% of the voters to vote yes to have a pass budget. We always like to share a little bit of the pass budgets and the margin of votes. Very high turnout last year with a large number of absentee, only vote by absentee ballot, so that increased our voting population significantly. But you can see, we've got strong support from the community over time, 70%, up 60%. So the community has been very supportive of budget votes in the past. It's always important to talk about what happens if the budget does fail, and that would put us into a contingency budget situation. So if it fails on the first attempt, the board can choose to either put the same budget or some modified version of that up for a second vote, or it could choose to go directly to a contingency budget. If it's defeated a second time, there is no other option. The Board of Education must adopt a contingency budget at that time, and a contingency budget has to exclude what are deemed to be non-contingent expenses. So things like new equipment, community to use the buildings, they have to be removed from the budget. And there's also an administrative cap portion. So there's a percentage calculation, and you would have to reduce by the amount of administrative expenses to get below that cap. That's a second requirement to a contingent budget. The other thing about a contingency budget is the property tax levy can't increase by any amount over the current year tax levy. So in our case, it would be certainly significant if we were in that situation. We would have to find either additional revenue and/or expenditure reductions totaling $962,000 in order to comply with the legal requirements under that circumstance. So this year's vote, the budget proposition, $104,979,570. We have a bus and vehicle proposition, that's $1,033,200. We have four candidates vying for three open seats. Luciano Alanzi, Blanca Gonzalez Parker, Seema Rivera, and Nathan Saboran are all candidates that will be on the ballot this year. So as a reminder, a vote date, Tuesday, May 18th. Polls open at 7:00 in the morning and will remain open until 9:00 p.m. at night. You need to vote at the elementary school in your attendance zone, and you can go to our website for more information if you're unsure which elementary school you would be voting at. And then I just have one other piece of information, then I'll add a question that came in asking about federal money that the district might be receiving, federal stimulus aid, what were the amounts and what could it be used for? So I'll just briefly run through that. We are receiving federal allocations under different pots of money. The first is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. That's 4.6 million. And also, we're receiving funds under the American Rescue Plan Act of $2.8 million. Basically, these are grant-driven application processes, so we have an allocation, but we have to apply for it. There are requirements and approvals that have to happen. Some of the things that federal aid can be used for, this type of federal aid, is addressing learning loss, student mental health supports, after-school and summer learning programs, activities to address the unique needs of low-income students, students with disabilities, English learners, racial and ethnic minorities, homeless students, and foster care youth, hardware and software for remote or hybrid learning, purchasing PPE and cleaning and disinfecting supplies, air quality and ventilation improvements, improving preparedness efforts and coordination, and planning for school closures. So there is certain categories, certain types of expenses that we can utilize this aid for. Again, we'll have to go through an application process and approval process to access those funds. With that, I can take any questions anybody might have? Yes, Kelly?
Neil, is there a deadline on getting in those applications or those grant requests?
There is a window in which the funds are available. So for the first one, the Corona Response and Relief Supplemental Program, that's through September 30, 2022. The American Rescue Plan is through September 30, 2023. The window hasn't officially been opened yet. I mean, we don't have a mechanism to submit anything at this point. Sure, that will be coming shortly. So obviously, we will need to be doing some planning within our district to identify priorities and put ourselves in a position to start filing for funds to meet those needs. Gloria? No, I'm sorry, Judy?
Thank you. I'm just wondering about pilots. There's a fairly large drop in pilots. Is that good or bad for our budget?
Yes and yes. Yeah, so good when they come on, bad when they come off. So they help us when they're coming on, but hurt us a little bit when they're coming off. And it's really the difference between what's incoming and outgoing. So that that delta between the two will determine how much of an impact it has from year to year. And Seema?
I just had a question about the pre-K and if they gave any more guidance about that.
Do you want to address that, Marie?
Yeah, I can jump in there. We have not received much more guidance about it, but we do know that there is some flexibility in how school communities actually implement the programming. And for several of us who have never been funded before, we are looking at putting together an RFP so we can have some community partners assist us with this. Because ironically, if those of you who were around and we were talking about pre-K several years ago, at this point, we do not have additional room in our elementary buildings. So we're actually working on putting together that RFP and getting it out so we can get a program, get the program supported in our community as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Neil? Okay, thank you, Neil. We will move on to the next part of our agenda. This is public comment number one. Before we start, I just wanted to give an update as a reminder, or give an update to public comment. We've decided that to be consistent among all the subcommittees and people writing in with public comment not really specifying which meeting they want public comment to be read at, we're just going to keep them all at the regular board meeting. It's too confusing and people writing in right before other meetings and not, you know, not knowing. So we're going to keep all public comments to regular board meetings. And we'll read 1 through 12 because they were received by 4:00 p.m., and then we'll read the last two with public comment number two, just to stick with our timeline that we wrote in the email. So I'll go, Gloria, and then we can just rotate. Sound good? We have backup people in case we drop. Public comment number one. "I was deeply offended by Barbara Fratarrigo's comment on April 14, 2021 Board Meeting about racial profiling for the position of assistant principal at GHS. She seemed to imply that because the position required knowledge about diversity in your student population, and as she saw only black women on the Diversity and Equity Committee possessing the skill that she, possessing the skill she claimed, she was, quote, worried that the job position would go to a person of color instead of someone like Amy Heralcheck, who is not a person of color. And in Barbara Fratarrigo's view, quote, did a great job where the woman of color lacked needed skills. I would like Ms. Fratarrigo to explain why she says that women of color know about diversity but do not possess the education skills and experience to be assistant principals, given that I am sure the district has students of color who may want to become principals, and after hearing her comments, found them discriminatory and hurtful."
Did you mention the author of that letter?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was Karen Lewis. Sorry, with a million tabs. Thank you.
Second letter. Firstly, I would like to take the opportunity to extend a huge thank you to Board President Dr. Rivera for the exceptional and exceptionally challenging work that she does on the board, school board, in service of Gilderlin students and families. In particular, my family and I have been extremely grateful, time and again, for her tireless efforts to advocate for true equity and diversity within the Gilderlin School District. Dr. Rivera, on behalf of myself, my husband, and most importantly, my children who attend Gilderlin schools, our family would like to say thank you for all you do. Secondly, I would like to address the shocking and distressing comments made by a board member at the last meeting on April 13, 2021. Mrs. Fratarrigo asked the question, "If you are asking for a diversity educator, are you racial profiling a position?" This comment was deeply concerning to me on many levels. Firstly, the correct definition of racial profiling, according to the Oxford Dictionary, is, quote, "The use of race or ethnicity as grounds for suspecting someone of having committed an offense," end quote. "Racial profiling is, in the United States, a tool of white supremacy that has been used both historically and in the present day to perpetuate violence against BIPOC peoples in an attempt to preserve the white supremacist status quo. I was shocked and distressed that someone who was supposed to be representing all Gilderlin students would use the term racial profiling in a way that was not only factually incorrect, but also blatantly disregarded and dismissed the pain and suffering of millions of BIPOC peoples who have had their lives and communities destroyed by racial profiling in our country. I urge Mrs. Fratarrigo, in her role as a board member, to spend some time learning about what racial profiling really actually is, as well as the devastating impact it has had and continues to have on the lives of BIPOC peoples, including that of district students and their families. In addition, I believe that this comment of racial profiling was made intentionally in an attempt to distract the board's energy and attention away from the real issue at hand. The real issue at hand is that Gilderlin desperately needs a full-time DEI coordinator. And counter to what Mrs. Fratarrigo asserted, the district has absolutely demonstrated an immediate need for this position to be full-time. In regard to this position, I would also like to add, I feel that this position should not be that of an AP or teacher, but should instead be that of an administrator under the direction of the district office. The reason I say that the position should not be an AP or teacher position is because those types of positions will have additional educational or disciplinary responsibilities associated with the jobs that will take significant time and energy away from the critical social and racial justice work this position will entail. The person who is hired for this position should have, in addition to any other education qualifications, an experience that they may need, lived experience in one or more of the areas that their work will involve, as well as a strong social and racial justice vision for how to move the district forward towards anti-racism, equity, and inclusion. That person will be the best person for the job, and I urge the administration to take seriously the equity, diversity, and inclusion pledge that the district made in the wake of George Floyd's murder when laying out the hiring guidelines for this position. I also strongly agree with Mrs. Gonzalez Parker that this is an essential, it is essential to clarify, clearly define, the job description of DEI coordinator. It would also be crucial to include community voices in the hiring process, specifically BIPOC parents and students who have been affected by the individual and institutional racism in the district. I also feel that the DEI coordinator should have a clear mechanism in place whereby they are empowered to enact district-wide policy measures that they recommend. The position must have the ability to actually affect change and not merely be symbolic. Thank you to all the board members who spoke up and voted to make the DEI position a full-time position for the coming school year. The third point I would like to address is the tax cap. As a parent and a resident, the most important priority to me and my family is a comprehensive, safe, high-quality education for any children, for my children. I will always ask that the district go as high as it needs to go in regard to approaching or even exceeding the tax cap if necessary in order to ensure that Gilderlin schools are fully funded, our children are fully supported in their learning. My fourth and final point that I would like to address is in regard to the proposed changes to the school start times. As a parent, I am very much in favor of changing the school start times to align the district with the current scientific research into adolescent sleep needs. Changing the start times to allow high school students to sleep later in the morning will have a positive impact on all aspects of high schoolers' physical, mental, and emotional well-being, and I urge the district to continue with its plans to adjust the start times. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments and concerns. Best, Sarah Kate Kanter, District Parent.
Thank you, Gloria. Number, I'll read number three. "Gilderlin Board of Education, thank you for taking the time to read my letter at tonight's board meeting. My name is Sean McConney, and I'm a resident of Gilderlin, a physical education teacher at Farnsworth Middle School, and a parent of a current eighth grader and sixth grader at FMS. I am also proud to be the varsity lacrosse coach and the modified field hockey coach here in Gilderlin. I am writing today to advocate for the move to a multi-use turf facility in the Gilderlin Central School District. This is my 18th year coaching lacrosse at Gilderlin, and until last spring, they all have been the same. The lacrosse season runs early March through May every year. We start our season in early March inside one of the gyms, a parking lot with student cars scattered in the middle, or have to ask our booster club to rent turf so we can have an authentic field to practice on. April has not been much better for us over the years because we can still not practice on the game field for the season." Um, muting yourself? Sorry, it's just... Sorry. "The game field is usually not lined until the day before our home game due to the wet conditions of the field, and this all puts us at a real disadvantage to our peers in the area. A multi-use turf facility would alleviate all of those problems and keep us on an equal playing field. Money is also a problem that we have struggled with over the years. We have to ask our booster club to raise over $1,500 every spring just so we can practice six times on a turf field before our first game. We also have to schedule scrimmages with teams that do have turf, and often that requires a charter bus to travel. This is all paid by our booster club families, booster club and families. We have not practiced or played on our game field in the month of March in my 18 years in the program. This is equal to over six seasons or a third of my time as a coach, where the student athletes are practicing in a parking lot, gym, or renting turf at the expense of our families. During this time, our student athletes do not know where or when the practice will be until 15 minutes before practice. It also forces us to practice at different times of the night and weekend, which is difficult on the student athletes when it comes to a schedule and when to manage their time for academics. The addition of this facility will allow us to have a regular scheduled practice, so the student athletes will be able to plan their time better and have a safer surface to practice and play on. The multi-surface will allow the sports the advantage of a safe and competitive playing field. I saw firsthand two years ago the benefit of the multi-sport turf facility and the effect it had on our field hockey program, winning the Section 2 championship. I saw it again this fall when the modified field hockey girls team had the opportunity to practice at Afrim's turf facility all fall, and the pace of development of the players was far beyond the years I have coached on uneven grass surfaces. One final point I would like to make is how it will benefit physical education programs at GHS. The ability to have a turf facility will lengthen the time that students can be outside for class in the fall, as well as getting outside earlier in the spring. The field with clearly defined boundaries will be safe and more accessible for all students in the district during physical education. I fully support the addition of a turf field to the district as a town resident, physical education teacher in the district, a parent and as a coach of multiple sports programs. Thank you for your time and consideration, Sean McConney."
Our next meeting, our next letter. "Dear School Board Members, hello. We are writing you this letter in the hopes that you will consider installing a turf field to enhance the facilities on the Gilderlin High School campus. We are the parents of Troy, a sophomore, and Travis, a seventh grader. Our kids are members of the football and basketball programs at Gilderlin. We are a proud sports family and are also both graduates of Gilderlin schools. We are both teachers, Mahonson and Bethlehem, and Chris has been a coach for many Gilderlin youth and now the school teams. To raise our kids in the town where we grew up is an incredibly special experience. I am sure many of you know countless other families who came back to Dutchland. There is a pride that comes with being a member of our community. To put our school colors on for game days fills us with so much camaraderie. Our coaches care deeply about who the kids are, both on and off the field. Our sports families have lifted us up during very difficult times. We credit sports with keeping our kids more focused in school, maintaining a strong and healthy body, developing character and sportsmanship, and meeting outstanding people. These are connections that are all happening beyond the classroom. A lot has changed since our days in the early 90s, but the current football field has stayed the same. We believe the student athletes of Gilderlin would benefit from an upgraded facility. A turf field would help us both logistically and mentally. Both male and female teams would be able to play and practice regardless of Mother Nature hitting us with poor weather or a pandemic. We wouldn't have to cancel or change events. We wouldn't have to schedule practices or games at alternate locations. We wouldn't have to move essential practices inside for fear of ruining the field. These are ways that a turf field would help us to logistically prepare for our tough competition." competition. In addition, in the year two thousand and twenty-one, we feel that our kids would have a greater pride for their programs with facilities that reflect our reputation and our times. As my kids like to tell us, "It's not the nineties anymore," unquote, this is how the turf field would help us to be prepared mentally for opponents that already have stellar facilities. In closing, we would like to thank you for your time in this matter. We dream of our kids coming back to town after pursuing their college education. Maybe they will be coaches, and maybe we will get to see our grandkids play for Gilderlin. We ask that you please consider installation of a turf field and add to the legacy of our student athletes. Sincerely, Sharon Orsini-Berschwenger, class of ninety-three, and Christopher Berschwenger, class of ninety-four.
Thank you, Gloria. I will read public comment number five. Uh, with schools across the country developing plans to open for a new school year in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, the controversial topic of school start times has arisen in conversation across the Gilderlin district. The school board met on March twenty-third and proposed a plan to make the school start time for high schoolers to be eight-twenty AM. Eight-twenty might not seem like a big difference from eight o'clock, but there are many factors that can affect our school community in those twenty minutes. As a Gilderlin student, I believe that school start time should be eight AM. A big issue that has to be considered with the possibility of a later start time is transportation. For a lot of students, transportation tuned from school is provided by their guardians, and at a later time could make it difficult for students to find a ride. While it might be logical to think that students could ride the bus to school, many families aren't comfortable sending their children on the bus and may feel this way in the upcoming school year, even though the COVID-nineteen cases are decreasing. Furthermore, in my opinion essay, one teen states, "In many cases, parents drop their children off at school even earlier than when it starts." This would leave a large percentage of students virtually unaffected by the later start times because they would still be reliant on transportation only available to them early in the morning, unquote. A later start time would just mean getting to school earlier than the actual start time, especially for those who rely on their guardians for transportation. Therefore, it would make the later start times difficult for the district to find supervision for early arrivers and may require more taxpayer dollars to contribute to the budget. Other factors that could prevent students from relying on school transportation may also include the location of their house or difficulties for those who travel between their parents' homes. An eight-twenty proposal is close to how much time students need in the morning, but not close enough. This proposal wouldn't give enough time for parents to get to their jobs and get their kids to school to make it to work on time, as the location of our school is not located near most workplaces. This is an important issue that the district must consider as they move forward. Many students at GHS, including myself, have faced the problem of having an empty piggybank and it's harder to get a, a job with how late we get out of school. It's frustrating to not even get a chance to get an interview because employers already rejected my classmates and me due to our limited available hours. In my opinion piece published at Student, Inc., one student has written, quote, "Due to child labor laws, minors cannot work past a certain time at night," causing students to work to lose hours, causing students who work to lose hours in, uh, which they could be available, end quote. If the time we start school next year gets any later than the proposed plan, many students will have the same problem, um, that many have faced already this year. The lack of availability in jobs will affect both students and our local economy in the long run. Some may say that an easier, oh, sorry, earlier start time can affect students negatively as it allows them to get less sleep so they can affect their overall performance. This may be true, however, from a student's experience, the amount of sleep received this, uh, sleep received this year with a start time of ten-ten has been no different than our initial starting time of seven-thirty. For many, a later start time just gives kids a reason to stay up later because they don't know they have to, they don't have to be at school at early in the morning. During my tenth grade English class, we watched a segment from a West Virginia News Channel that stated, quote, "Sleep helps to repair hormones that control appetite and resets your immune system," unquote. As we continue to fight off COVID-nineteen, sleep is an important factor to end the pandemic. By the fall, experts say that COVID will still be a problem and precautions will have to be made. As vaccines are becoming available to high school age students, sleep is an important factor in how effective their vaccine is. National Geographic says many researchers are still investigating that sleep can overall boost effectiveness of the COVID-nineteen vaccine. Students can still receive a good amount of sleep. We know this based on when kids went to bed last year. I believe this, uh, that a start time of eight AM is still manageable, but also helps students in the end, which is what everyone at GH, uh, needs after a hectic year. As a sophomore at Gilderlin High School, I believe that the school's start time should be eight AM. After a year of sudden change, a start time of eight AM would make students feel a little bit of normalcy back in their lives. An earlier start time helps students' mental and physical health, but also gives times for extracurriculars after school, allows guardians to provide transportation for their kids, and allows students to have, uh, to have a good dynamic between school and their home lives. As a student in the Gilderlin High School community, all I ask is to consider mine and my peers' reasons as it can change the rest of our high school careers and beyond. Sincerely, Nora Abel. Gloria.
I'm so sorry. My family and I fully support the work and mission of the Gilderlin Central School District's Equity and Diversity Committee. As a lifelong area resident of a Gilderlin resident and a Gilderlin resident of more than eight years with two children in the Gilderlin Central School District school system, I have experienced school and community conversations and situations that reinforce my belief that the E and D committee's work is important and necessary, not just in the world in general, but specifically here in our GCSD community. I understand there has been pushback from some community members against the committee. The fact that this pushback exists is itself a sign that the committee's work is needed as well. Thank you to the committee members for continuing to work diligently toward creating a more diverse, equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist environment for the children and families of the Gilderlin Central School District. Thank you, Meredith Grosshandler.
Thank you, Gloria. I will read public comment number seven. Dear board members, the Girls Lacrosse Booster Club is writing this letter to request your support in granting the Gilderlin School District multipurpose turf fields to support the athletic school programs and the community. Please keep in mind that Gilderlin is one of the few schools in Section Two that currently does not have any turf fields. Beyond lacrosse, many sports would benefit from having a multipurpose turf field such as football, soccer, field hockey, et cetera. Not having a turf field to practice on puts our teams at a disadvantage from the point of tryouts to the end of the season for each sport. At this point, with the grass field that we currently have, we are not able to use them early in the spring due to the conditions of the field. Practices and sometimes games are dependent on the weather. With the decreased practice time in the late start of the season, we are put at a disadvantage to our competitors who have been, uh, who have been utilizing their own updated turf fields. Lacking a turf field also affects the booster club financially. The Girls Lacrosse team has for many years been traveling to other facilities with turf such as SUNY Albany, Union College, and Mahonason High School. The turf rental at these facilities are a strain on the booster club's budget with an annual payout of up to thirty-five-hundred annually. It is also difficult to arrange for the transportation to and from these facilities. Many times, a school bus only brings you there, and the parents are required to travel outside of their school district to pick up their student athlete afterwards. Furthermore, students that drive to school have to arrange their time to go back to the high school to pick up their car. Having a multipurpose turf field at Gilderlin High School would benefits the sports teams to compete in the highly competitive Section Two league, decrease unnecessary transportation, and save booster clubs the strain of budget restrictions. Please consider giving the Gilderlin community the pride to play on our own Gilderlin home turf. Sincerely, the, the Girls Lacrosse Booster Club.
My family and I fully support the work and mission of the Gilderlin School District Equity and Diversity Committee. We have lived in the Gilderlin area for seven years and have two children in the school system. I am also a professor at the University at Albany, where I teach a diverse body of students, and our family have had experiences in the Gilderlin community and schools that demonstrate that our school and community is in desperate need for the work of this committee. We must work and support this committee so that our children and ourselves learn to live, learn to live, learn, and thrive in a more diverse world, in a multicultural world. We must actively work to create a more equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist school community by revising the policies, practices, and programs that reinforce rather dated and problematic ideas and attitudes. Diversity is a strength, and if our children are to thrive and be competitive in the future in their studies and in the workforce, they need to learn to live and thrive in a diverse, equitable, inclusive, and fair society. I am concerned and yet not surprised that there have been negative pushback from some members of the community against this committee. This demonstrates how desperately our school and our community needs this committee and the work that they have set out to do. My family and I thank the committee members for the work you are doing and for staying strong despite the negative voices that wish to keep the status quo going, no matter how hurtful and problematic it is for our children. I support the work of this committee. Sincerely, Dr. Veronica Perez Rodriguez.
Thank you, Gloria. I will read public comment number nine. Uh, I'm writing to express my gratitude to Dr. Wiles and the board members for creating the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. I also want to express my thanks to the faculty members, community members, and students who are part of the group. The formation of this committee is an acknowledgement that systemic racism exists and impacts the lives of Gilderlin students. In addition, the inclusion of a full-time diversity and equity coordinator in this year's budget further highlights the district's commitment to truly making changes and providing a new option for students to seek out support. It is time for our district to take a stand and make clear that we are working towards a safe, hate-free environment for all of our students. It is time for our district to encourage classroom discussions regarding race and the effects of racism. It also, it is also time for our district to examine ways in which we can actively work against racism in our schools. The work of the DEIC is, is complex, challenging, and necessary. Thank you for your commitment to helping our schools become places where all students feel that they are seen and where faculty are supported when they choose to talk about race and racism. This is not easy work, and I am grateful that my children are part of a district where the superintendent, board members, community members, and students are willing to take risks even when barriers and roadblocks continue to be put in front of them. Keep going, you have my support and the support of those listed below. Respectfully, I'll just read the names since they took the time to write the names. Elizabeth Sabrin, Amy Irwin, Ryan Irwin, Anna Quackenbush, Steve Quackenbush, Nicole Nolan, Will Nolan, Courtney Cologne, Maggie Williams, Rich Williams, Ryan Miller, Kathleen Miller, Griffin Lothrup, Amanda Lothrup, Gretchen Gunther, Kim Mirabella, Chris Mirabella, Trish Cooper, Lindsay Jacob, Kaylee Timonas, Nicole Pikel, Mike Pikel, Melissa Baumdier, Chris Baumdier, Alicia Dean, and Kelly Doris.
My family and I fully support the work and mission of the Gilderlin Central School District's Equity and Diversity Committee. As a twenty-three-year area resident and a Gilderlin resident of more than eight years with two children in the Gilderlin Central School District school system, I have experienced school and community conversations and situations that reinforce my belief that the E and D committee's work is important and necessary, not just in the world in general, but specifically here in our school's community. I understand there have been pushback from some community members against the committee. The fact that this pushback exists is itself a sign that the committee's work is needed as well. Thank you to the committee members for continuing to work diligently toward creating a more diverse, equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist environment for children and families of the Gilderlin School District. Thank you, Mike Grosshandler.
Okay, I'll read public comment number eleven. As a parent of a dyslexic child, I would like to know when the budget will include funding to train and certify teachers in explicit multisensory structured literacy programs designed for dyslexic children. Children with reading disabilities, mainly dyslexia, make up a large percentage of special education students. This conversation is long overdue, seeing that our district embraces primarily whole-language instruction with a small amount of phonics. I believe under COVID relief, the U.S. Department of Education is releasing funding for evidence-based interventions. This is from Mara McCoy.
Uh, Seema, the next one, letter L. Uh, I'm receiving an error message when I try to open it. It said the document appears to be corrupted and cannot be loaded.
Okay, I'll read it, and then, um, the last two we'll save for public comment number two. Um, sure. Good afternoon, I'm interested in learning more about the impact the proposed budget will have on the curriculum. I'm hearing a lot about the sixteen-nineteen project, a theory that originated in twenty-nineteen by the New York Times. I'm concerned Gilderlin is implementing such theories, and the increases in taxes is contributing. I would like to all, I would also like to understand why Gilderlin needs a diversity administrator. What is the job description and how will this position reduce racism? Is this position long-term? How will success be measured? Honestly, I'm extremely concerned with the indoctrination occurring and the division being built. Thank you for your time, Kate Nowitzki. Okay, so that was, those were twelve public comments. Um, I think if, if anybody has a response to them, I think we can save them for, uh, board sharing and ideas at the end, and when we get to public comment two, then we can read numbers thirteen and fourteen. Moving on to our next item, the consent items. This includes the minutes of the March thirtieth, April thirteenth, and April twenty-first meeting, CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, and the financials, um, for March thirty-first. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Blanca, second bar. Any questions or, um, pages? All in favor? It passes nine-zero. Thank you. So next, we have information items, curriculum and instruction, and Dr. Singleton?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Just a quick update on Regents testing for, uh, June and beyond. At the March Board of Regents meeting, there were several amendments to the Commissioner's regulations that were adopted for two thousand and twenty-one school year. Of note was the denial by the U.S. Department of Education to waive New York State testing requirements for two thousand and twenty-one. As such, the State Education Department will administer all federally mandated exams at grades three through eight, which are ongoing and concluding this week, as well as at the high school level. Mandated Regents exams for June of two thousand and twenty-one will include Algebra I, Earth Science, with the exception of the Part D, Living Environment, and English. The Board of Regents has also adopted a series of Regents exam exemptions for students who have met the standards for the course of study as locally determined by the district, and these include when a student is currently enrolled in a course of study ending in a Regents exam and by the end of the two thousand and twenty-one school year or the two thousand and twenty-one summer session will have earned credit in such course of study, as well as when a student was previously enrolled in the course, ending in the applicable Regents examination, has achieved course credit, and has not yet passed the associated required Regents examination, but was intending to take the test in June of twenty-one or August of twenty-one to achieve the passing score. And then the final exemption is when a student is in grade seven or eight, these are the accelerated courses, and is enrolled in a course of study ending in a Regents examination and has met the standards assessed in the provided coursework. And then a final note, all of the August Regents exams have been canceled for two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Singleton. Does anyone have questions? Okay, so we'll move on to school business information. Mr. Sanders?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rivera. This evening, we have with us Director of Facilities Clifford Noonie. He's going to have a discussion with the board, uh, following up on a conversation he had with the Business Practices Committee about potential October two thousand and twenty-one capital project proposition. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it over to Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Good evening, everybody. I think the easiest way to start is really just try to review the conversation I had with our Business Practice Committee in a concise format. We started the conversation with a little history. In two thousand and eighteen, we went out with a proposition, a little over forty-two million dollars to the public. That was put together based on our two thousand and sixteen five-year capital plan and what we call our Building Condition Survey, which is developed using our architects, engineers, as well as facility staff. That was voted down by the public by fifty-six votes. I was given the not-so-envious task to take that project and make reductions. So, two thousand and nineteen, we put up a thirty-point-nine-million-dollar project. We basically cut about eleven-point-eight-million dollars out of the original capital project. That bond passed. Obviously, we're in the middle of that project now, we're coming into year two. Fall of two thousand and nineteen, the subject of a turf field came up, and we started having conversations around a turf field, and if we were going to pursue that, did it make sense to try and go back and recapture some of the critical items that we had cut out of our original bond project? Those conversations carried into... Those conversations carried into winter, later winter of 2020, and then we came into the pandemic. Working with our district office team, we did not feel at that time, and with all the other work we had to do, it was potentially the right time to go back out to the public with a capital bond project. Fast forward to January 2021, I had met with the Business Practice Committee, and we talked about that our actual current project came in under bid in certain areas, and there would be potential to maybe recapture some of the items in a smaller scope that we had cut. Still not knowing what the financial picture looked like, we kind of left it at that. In between there, the turf field came up again. And I thought would be, we would be remiss not to have the conversation, at least with the board and the community. Financial picture still with some unknowns, not as bleak as it may be originally looked in December, January timeframe. And really, a lot of the work we're looking at is critical work to the school district, and we'll cover some of those things that we took out of the project, that if we were not to take this opportunity now, realistically, we're probably looking at 2026, '27 timeframe of another separate capital project. Another part of this conversation was, in the project was resurfacing and redoing our track. Originally, I was going to do that this summer, because at the end of the day, there's never a good summer to tear your track apart and put it back together. As the turf field conversations kicked around, if we wanted to pursue it, it really doesn't make sense to put in a new track and then come two years later, three years later, five years later, potentially damage that track or rip that track up to put in the turf field. So I thought it would be at least a good time for us to have the conversation. So we pushed the track work in our current project in the 2022 to allow us to at least see if the board wants to pursue a potential, what we've been calling a mini capital project for this fall. Some of the components that we took out of our original bond, there's what we call programming components, which are really around our classrooms, how we deliver instruction, modernizing our classrooms, casework and storage in our classrooms, casework, which is basically cabinetry, classroom technology. Some of the site work we took out, one of the bigger ones is playgrounds. We removed from the capital project, which still need work. We have paving. Nobody likes this one. We still have an old district office that we need to contend with. And turf field would fall under the site work as well. There's an HVAC component. We removed boilers. We removed unit ventilators, exhaust systems, delayed that work. There is a piece, as Neil talked about, the federal funding earlier. There is a component there. We just don't know what that looks like yet, and what that would mean towards a capital project, how we could apply potentially some of those funds to offset the capital project. Mechanical, electrical plumbing, that's our bathroom fixture updates. For example, if you go back to some of our student thought exchanges, I think you would find a few comments on modernizing our bathrooms. Security, we have some issues in our, one of our high school tunnels with heating infrastructure. That's kind of a, an issue that rose its ugly head again this past winter. Examples, things we did with like roofing, we changed the scope. So instead of replacing a roof, we went and re-seamed roofs. And I guess, I think the analogy I used with the Business Practice Committee was, it's kind of like either buying new tires for your car or used ones. So we're kind of buying used, used tires for our roofing. It's not going to last as long versus if you bought new tires, they're going to last longer. It's a way to save money. It's not necessarily the best investment. So if we were to pursue this, we would put together another mini facilities committee. We've talked about Queensberry did a 40-plus million dollar capital project on our high school alone, of taking a field trip up there to get some thoughts and ideas of what they It would basically be, we would have to hustle, because we would put this together, May, have something back to the board, mid-June, board would have to approve the project. Probably realistically, it'd be the reorganization meeting if we were going to proceed, because we'd go to design development in July and August. We would present to our community in September, and we would go out to vote in October, and we would be able to proceed with some of the work in 2022. Some of the work realistically would carry into 2023. We will have, I won't say it's an example, but, and I don't like the fact that, why we have it, but there will be one brand-new classroom in the high school that we could take a look at to see. We should have the furniture late May. It's actually the room that was damaged by the fire. But when I say brand-new, it's new floor, new walls, new paint, new ceiling, new lights. It's got that new classroom smell. And, you know, it'll just give people an idea, if you walk into a classroom, that kind of still looks like it was built in 1952, because it was built in 1952, versus, you know, walking into a new home. It's a brand-new classroom. It's shiny, it's clean, has up-to-date LED lighting, it's controllable, controls by daylight. It will have new furniture, and that was really, there were some constraints there with the insurance company, so I won't say it would be our optimal design, because we stayed within those monetary constraints for being able to replace the furniture. That's kind of it in a nutshell. And I guess I just want to be clear, the turf field would be part of the conversation. The turf field's not going to be the only part of the conversation. There's other infrastructure work that is a priority that needs to be done in the school district. And if we were to wait, I don't think that's the best plan. Seema?
Oh, I'll let Barb go and share her hand up in that.
Oh, I, I just had a question. Is it possible to have two bond issues? One, for the turf field and the playgrounds, and the other one for all the necessary, you know, items that obviously need to be revamped and revisited? I constantly hear about the bathrooms at the high school and how so often they're closed and, you know, because of our 52-year-old plumbing, basically. So is it possible to, to, to split and have two separate votes in September, that those who might see, you know, the turf, which I don't, as a luxury, we'd be one of very few schools that don't have a turf field, versus, you know, those things that you just need to upkeep your buildings? Is that possible?
It, it is possible, Barb. We did that before, actually in 20, when we vote 2013, 2014 proposition, we can split things out. We also had in that case where one passed and one didn't. So, but it is possible, very possible.
I just had a question about, did you say, Cliff, that some of the federal funds could be used for the, I guess, the stuff that's more like upkeep?
It could be, well, still learning, Seema, I think, as everybody else is, but there's an HVAC component for improved ventilation, which would fall into updating our unit ventilators, which is a piece of equipment that controls our, in a classroom. It's like your furnace in your home. That's a piece of equipment in a classroom that brings fresh air, provides heat, maybe air conditioning, depending on the design. So short answer, yes. Don't have enough detail of exactly what that looks like.
Thank you.
Judy?
Oh, I just would like to say, I think this should go as one bond issue. I don't agree with Barb at all. I think people will come out and, and vote, and they may come out and vote in self-interest for the turf field or some of the other things, and say, well, we don't really need new heating. It's kept the buildings okay. And these are issues that were in our last bond issue, that Cliff, especially, who looks at this all the time, feels is really significantly important, and I think we would be making a mistake to separate them.
Rebecca? I was just wondering, Cliff, and you might have said this, but what, are there any items in the previous capital project that didn't, that narrowly didn't pass, that did not make this list?
Items that did not make this list?
Like, how do they differ?
Between, I don't know if I understand the question, Rebecca. Basically, with turf field.
That's, that's the only difference?
Pretty much, yes, Ben.
Okay, thank you.
Everything else on here was part of the original capital project that went down. The only component on here right now, off the top of my head, would, would be the turf field.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't remember who is, who leads Business Practices, but was there a discussion there about having one bond versus two, or, you know, putting it together, splitting it up? I didn't know if they discussed that there.
I don't, as chairman, I don't think that we did. Barbara's suggestion was the first time that I had heard splitting it into two. Neil or Cliff or anybody on the committee?
It was a brief discussion, and I, I kind of hedged back away, just for my past experience here. And I will just say, the honest answer, it can be done. It could also be done in a way that one can't pass without the other. So for example, if all the infrastructure work was put into one capital project, the turf and playgrounds can't pass without the other one passing.
Like, I just worry, I, I imagine that a lot of people would want to see the upkeep, the basic things that are in facilities need to, need to be improved. I just wouldn't want those things to not pass because there's a pushback. I know there's a lot of support in turf field, and I have not heard the opposite, but I don't know if those people would write in. I just don't know.
No, I mean, shorter answer is, we can do that. Seema, I mean, we can split them. Ceciana, I think, was first.
So two things. First, I think this is an excellent move towards our goal of facilities development. We have a good balance between moving towards the future with the turf field and maintaining what we currently have and fixing things and making sure that what we have is up to date. Second thing is, Cliff, did you want to touch on any of the additional things that we're sort of adding back into the current capital project?
Yes, I can, I mean, we, we talked about, this was part of the conversation we had in January, the Business Practice Committee. Obviously, we won't get into a ton of detail, but our radon issues at the high school. We're currently folding into our current capital project under some of the contingencies. And like I said, we came in under bid in certain areas. We had already started retention pond work out in front of the high school. Basically, it's, it's, it's a pond that nobody notices, because if it's working right, it's not supposed to have water in it. If you've driven by the high school a few times and seen the pond full, it's not operating properly. It's basically an overflow for a stormwater system. And if it doesn't work properly, what will happen is actually water will come back into our building through our floor drains. That work is already started. There's a component, the town applied for a grant for sidewalk expansion, basically from the mall, Price Chapper area, up to the Gillan Public Library. And included Gillan Elementary on the other side. You've already seen there was a crosswalk painted. That crosswalk's actually going to get moved to the other side of our entranceway, but if we cross and we have no place for us to safely put our students coming into Gillan Elementary. So a part we're looking at is being able to do a sidewalk extension on our property. And, and then the last item we're looking at, the Gillan Police Department actually received a grant for a radio signal enhancement project for the district, which basically will just enhance radio signals in all our buildings for all our first responders. So that may also be, we're still, actually, they're meeting on, at their board meeting tonight to discuss that, and there will be an RFP going out. So once we have a better idea of the bid costs, there is a 25% local share to the school district towards that grant opportunity. Total grant was, I believe, around $345,000. And it's just a huge security component, because anybody with a cell phone that goes into Farnsworth Middle School knows there's no signal for anything. And we have other buildings. And depending on the cost, we did a survey across all our buildings, so we would prioritize worst and work our way backwards to best, you know, who's the least affected. But I can say, Farnsworth, hands down, is probably our winner. Ben?
So my concern is about the future-ready piece. As we kind of discussed last night, you know, I think, you know, what we want to do is build a vision for what we want our schools to look like, and the kind of graduate that we want it to produce, and to, you know, enlist the community and our teachers and our students in that process, and then, you know, get buy-in from the community by, by presenting this vision instead of, you know, like a vague phrase like, like "future-ready", which, to be honest, even I am still, you know, vague about, you know, flexible seating and smart boards. So my, my concern is that we include that future-ready classroom money in this capital project. It's, goes into items either that we didn't need, or, you know, for, for our vision, or, or we did need it, but the optics are the same in that, in a cup, in a year or two, when we finish that process of kind of, of kind of building a vision for our schools, as opposed to a, you know, facilities, you know, kind of approach where, you know, what do we need to upgrade? You know, we're going to come back to the community and say, "future-ready classrooms" again, you know? And they might come back and say, "Well, then you asked for that a year or two ago." So my, so my concern is that maybe the timeline is too tight on, on some of those pieces. Infrastructure-wise, you know, I'm supportive of a, of a proposition.
And with, Ben and I, we did have this conversation, the Business Practice Committee, and I very much understand his point. And just one of the things I put back, we have just shy of 400 classrooms in this school district. So I don't think any one capital project would make them all future-ready in one fail swoop. So I do think, regardless of what the vision is or what direction district wants to go, that it would probably be a multi-capital project approach to be able to do that. Oh, Kelly?
I think I skipped a couple people, but anyway, I, I really would like to focus on making whole our 2018 capital project, specifically with the program components, the technology, playgrounds, HVAC. I'd like to really focus on drilling down to the, I think it's the American Rescue Side Act or funding, to see how much of that we can get grants for, obviously, over the next two or three years here. Maybe they'll be left over at the end for the turf field, but I feel like the turf field is jumping the priority list a little bit from what was already discussed for the past probably five years of working towards getting new toilets. So it's kind of like, that's how I feel about turf field. I feel, I feel it's a great opportunity, and I know it's very much wanted, but I think there's other things that have, we need to, you know, get out, start on that priority list first from the things that wasn't passed. Thanks.
I struggle with that every day, Kelly. Blanca, I think, was next.
Yeah, I mean, to Kelly's point, I'm pretty sure that in 2019, I used the same toilet that I used in 1993. But, so I get it. I am very much in favor of the turf field and the mini, you know, vote in the fall to fund this. I think, what I would like to know from you, Cliff, and/or Marie, or Neil, how many years have people been asking for this turf field?
It is, and Regan can jump in here, too. This has been a conversation for many years. I'd go at least six, if not longer. This did come up back even when we were developing the Capital Project 2013 era, but we had a component with our field lighting system that was a higher priority, that was actually a safety priority versus the, the that was a higher priority. That was actually a safety priority versus the, the turf field at that time.
Gotcha. So, I'm in favor of a mini capital project to include the turf field. And also, I agree with Kelly. I'd like to see if we can use some of that federal funding for the air quality and ventilation improvements to include something like air conditioning. Air conditioning feels like a luxury, sounds like a luxury HVAC, but it's really more than that, especially in a post-pandemic world. And the turf field also, as much as we want to get back to our normal, I think it's going to be a slower process than people think. And so, sporting events are really, I think, going to be an opportunity for the community to get together. So, I, I would like to support anything that can, you know, be done safely.
Gloria?
I'd, I'd like to ditto Ben's, Ben's remarks regarding our conversations last night that we really haven't created a vision yet of that future ready classroom because it's, it's out there as an idea, but we really need to work on that piece. So, I, you know, I like to support us getting ahead on that. I also understand Cliff, that you can't do it all at once, but there may be a set of classrooms, maybe one of the subject areas or disciplines that might be ready to move on. And that, that may have moved, they have made it, made their thinking. Maybe it's in technology, I don't know, but you would know that better. But maybe there's a piece we can get started on in terms of moving forward. Regarding the turf field, I have to say that year, year or two ago, I was of the opinion, no, this is not in my ballpark. I see it as a luxury and I saw it as a luxury. But the more I've been hearing from people, the more I've been listening, I think it's, it's, it's not a luxury anymore. It's become a necessity for our athletes to participate. And our athletic program is just as important as many of our other programs. It teaches our kids so many, so many life skills. So, I am in support of that. I, you know, I, I know that it's going to be a hard sell, but I have really given this a lot of thought. And I think we need to support that kind of a program as well as we support other types. I agree with Kelly also. We need to keep those facility types of lists that we have not moved on. We need to get back at that list. So, I don't know how many this bond issue is going to be with that kind of thinking, but we have a lot of, a lot of things on our plate.
And I, I have purposely stayed away from numbers because as, if we walk away this evening with permission from the board to at least proceed, there'll be many more meetings beyond tonight. This is just conceptual to say, would we like to, you know, take this on and look at it? Because a, a lot of times I've seen it here, we get stuck on a number in our head and that doesn't necessarily reflect the work that needs to be done. It's kind of like the car mechanic telling you, you need $1,000 to be your car to make it safe. And you hand him $750 and say, do what you can do. So, it, I don't think this is going to be anything crazy. And I'll, I'll just keep using the term mini for now. Barbara?
Well, I, I just wanted to confirm what Regan said. We have had requests prior to even 2013 for turf field. And as, you know, more and more of our suburban council schools, you know, have gotten them, and the safety issues and, and transportation issues and everything else have come to the fore. This is a long time coming and, and I'm delighted that in one form or another, you know, we put it out to the public and let them, you know, let them decide.
Seema?
I just want to add one thing about whatever is decided that the communications committee is involved early. I just feel like last time that capital project failed, I think there was an impression out there that we were asking, you know, for like, find this guy type things, but there were a lot of essentials to keep the facilities just, like, just to maintain them. And I don't think that message got across. So, I don't, I don't want that to happen again. So, whatever's decided, I feel like we need to think about how we're communicating that out to the, the community really early and clear.
Very much agree. I believe Rebecca. Muted Rebecca.
I really support upgrading our overall facilities, but I share Kelly's concern about, I think it's Kelly's concern about lumping together the turf field with our overall facilities needs. I, you know, unlike Gloria, I know that we were on the Business Practices Committee together a few years ago. And I still sort of see the turf field as a luxury item compared to toilets and boilers. I mean, those are items that kids use, all of our students use, not just the student athletes. So, I really would want those items to be prioritized long before consideration of the turf field.
Blanca?
I'll just speak to Rebecca's comment first. I think the idea of the turf field is that it could also be used for gym class, if I'm not mistaken, right? PE. So, I think in fact it would. Also, some of you know that one of my big things is I'm anti-bullying. And I have found that participating in sports can be really helpful with that because it's almost like when you're on the field, you're on an even playing field, no pun intended. I, I just really think that this turf field is important. I'd like to see us work the numbers. I do agree with Seema, like, wholeheartedly. The communications piece, last time, I was opposed to, I was annoyed as a parent. I'm like, seriously? Why haven't you guys been, been doing upkeep? Why are you asking me for more money, X, Y, Z? I see that completely differently now. And it's all about the messaging, I think. So, I'm 100% in agreement with Seema on the communication piece. Also, I think you talked about getting a committee together. I don't know how you're going to go about picking folks, but I would be very interested in being part of that.
Oh, I'll leave that part to Dr. Wild. Is your hand still up Barbara, or is that?
You muted Barbara. Yeah. The, the messaging that a number of you have mentioned is clearly important. I don't think we can put out that we want future ready classrooms and use that terminology, but specify as I think Gloria or somebody said, you know, particular wing or, you know, whatever Cliff deems necessary. If you like what you saw with this classroom that got burned and now looks more modernized. But I think, like somebody else said, the messaging is so important. But I heard so much from people saying future ready, what is that? You know, why do you, why do you need movable furniture? Why do you need this? Why do you need that? And I, I know we had some slides and some pictures and things, but I, I think we have to stay away from that terminology and become a little more concrete.
Don't, don't disagree Barbara. We've had those conversations many times that I know we could have done a better job in certain areas with communication to our community on that project. So. So, no, now I was gonna throw in, there, there is a, with turf field, and I'm not plugging one way or the other, that there is actually a music component there too, with a potential, like marching band type setup that doesn't currently exist in Gillan. I know Bob Whinan's kind of got excited about that a little bit too. So, like I said, not, not plugging, but there's more to it than just a football game. There's PE classes. There's, it's multi, it's five sports that will be able to play on it. Any sport can practice on it. Even our baseball teams will be able to practice on it, you know, if, if conditions on the fields weren't, weren't ready. So.
Whatever the plans end up being, it would be nice if there's like a possibility to do, like a field trip. I, I remember a few years ago when they had the auditorium, I think, lights. And there was something else at the, at the fields too. Anyways, I remember walking around and seeing it firsthand. That, that's also helpful, you know, to know what we're talking about, especially like that classroom you mentioned Cliff, the, the, the new art room.
No, we will, we will definitely, I would definitely like the, we talked about doing a field trip up to Queensberry. For those that are interested, I would be very interested in that as well. It's probably one of the newest renovated high schools in the area. And then anywhere else we need, think we may need to go. Like I said, this, this will be a hustle. And if I'm reading the board correctly, because like I said, we're not asking to approve a project tonight. We're just, I just didn't want to go do a bunch of work. Obviously, if we weren't interested in doing the work. So, really, our next steps, the board is good, is we will, I will get with the district office team. We'll get communications out about how we're going to set up a facilities committee, start work. I've already started work with our architects. I have preliminary playground plans to share with our PTAs just as a starting point. So, some work has gone on regardless. And it would have went on regardless of this meeting tonight or not, just as we move forward. These are things we just continually work on. So. If we're good, Dr. Rivera, I, I believe, just from everybody's comments, we'll, we'll move forward with putting together a, a proposition for the board to review.
Thank you Cliff.
No, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you too. I think Neil, still, you still have one more item?
Yes, that's correct. This is the annual recommendation from the District White Health Insurance Committee. And what is being recommended by the committee this year for our major medical plans, there's no changes in the benefit design. But Blue Shield PPO Plan, which is a $25 office co-pay with vision and dental coverage. It's a decrease in the rate for next year of minus 1%. A Blue Shield Point of Service Plan, again, $25 office co-pay and this has dental coverage. That again, is a 1% decrease in premiums for next year. CDP HP EPO Plan, $25 office co-pay with dental coverage. That is an increase of 3.25%. We have an MVP Plan, HMO Plan, $25 office co-pay with dental coverage. That is an increase of 1.8% in premiums for next year. In terms of our Maritcare Advantage Plans, we have four of them. The Blue Shield PPO Plan is a minus 0.2%, so a decrease in rates. Same with the Blue Shield Out of Area Plan. It's a decrease of 0.6%. The CDP, HP, PPO and HMO Plans are renewing at no increase, so staying flat. We're also continuing our prescription, self-insured prescription drug program through Express Scripts, $5 generic, $25 brand name, $40 brand name, non-preferred co-pay. And that is another instance of no increase, 0%. And then finally, for our prescription drug plans, we have a CanRx mail order prescription drug, drug plan. And that's for maintenance medications, $0 co-pay. And that is 0% rate renewal change as well. So, very low premium increases for next year.
Thank you Neil. Does anybody have questions? Thank you Neil. We'll move on to superintendent information, Dr. Wild.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I have several items, but my first one is really good news and it comes on the heels of our conversation around the football field. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the Gilderlin Dutchmen on their very first double A football championship last Friday night. I've included the link to watch the game if you are interested. It was very exciting. But I want to congratulate all our coaches. Coach Penna, who's been in the news a lot in the last few days, but of course, all of our players, our parents and the entire athletic department. It was a game filled with really brave decision-making and our kids did great. And we really needed a win on Friday night. So, I just want to congratulate everybody for that accomplishment. My next item in my computer is very slow tonight, but our next item tonight is to recognize that next Wednesday, May 12th, is National School Nurse Day. This has been set aside since 1972 and it's a way to recognize school nurses and to foster a better understanding of the role they play in an educational setting. And this year's theme was championing the whole student and recognizing that school nurses play in a, just an indispensable role in our children's lives in school and their cognitive, physical, social and emotional development. And never more so than this year when we brought our children to school and educated them in a pandemic. So, I just want to thank all of our nurses for their amazing work, their participation in testing clinics and vaccination clinics and all kinds of things that are just really above and beyond. And then this week is also Teacher Appreciation Week. And I can't think of another group of people who have had more challenge and triumph in a year than working through this really remarkable year and all that we ask them to do to, to keep the learning going for our students in a pandemic. So, I know there's been celebrations all over the district to recognize their work. And I just didn't want this evening to go by without saying how much we appreciate all, all of their efforts and all of their accomplishments. So, my next item is perhaps not as effusive, but I did want to provide a brief update on our recent technology outage. As you all know, on Thursday, April 22nd, we experienced a significant disruption to our district's internet and data systems. We're continuing to work with specialists and law enforcement to investigate the source of this disruption and to confirm its impact on our systems. And as you know, it's because of that, we transitioned to fully remote instruction for our seven through 12 students for several days, while our technology team worked tirelessly to restore us to full functionality. And then on Thursday, the 29th, we were able to safely and reliably restore internet service and most of our systems so that our faculty and hybrid learners could actually return to the middle and high school. Our tech team is continuing to work to resolve some remaining issues. And I just want to take this opportunity to, to thank the members of that team who went above and beyond, doesn't begin to capture it, to rebuild and restore our operations so that we could be back online safely and securely. Because this item is still under investigation, there's really no other information to share right now. But I do want the you and the whole community to know that it can be assured, we've taken all appropriate precautions to restore our systems in a safe and secure manner. And we will be incorporating additional technologies into our cybersecurity as we move forward. So, I wanted to just share that update with everyone. I'm waiting for my computer to load here. My next item, I also wanted to let the community know about a recent opportunity that I had. I was given the chance to ride along with State Trooper Jeff Owens, who was assigned to Troop G in Latham. And Mr. Michael Altieri, who's one of our parents and an investigator with the Bureau of Criminal Investigations with the New York State Police, actually offered the invitation and coordinated the ride along with Trooper Owens. The ride along was on Friday, April 23rd, and I was out much later than my typical bedtime, all the way till 11 o'clock. We covered a lot of territory in the Albany area, included a number of traffic stops and other stops for a variety of reasons. And it was really clear, there's a great deal that goes on in the area of law enforcement. And I really appreciate how generous Trooper Owens was with his time and willingness to explain to me all that was going into the work that we saw. So, I just wanted to thank Mr. Altieri for arranging this opportunity. And then, let's see, next, I want to share a little bit of information about graduation. And I seize the text going here. I too am having trouble with the agenda loading if it makes everyone feel better. So. The next item, and we have Mr. Piscatelli with us as well, but I just wanted to let everyone know that we do now have firm plans for our graduation ceremony for June of 2021. So, we have been monitoring the guidance from New York State on commencement ceremonies for the past few weeks. And our goal has been to host a graduation ceremony that allows our students to celebrate all together and include their immediate families. So, the State Department released some updated guidance on the 12th and the 27th. And the key highlights are that we can host indoor events of over 150 people, but it's limited to 25% capacity. And they require a negative COVID test or proof of vaccination. And for outdoor events over 500, we're limited to 33% capacity and also approved of a negative test or approved vaccination. So, a little over a month ago, Schenectady County Community College reached out to area schools to say that we could use a parking area on their campus to host graduation ceremonies. And several other schools looked at it and many are taking them up on this offer. And even though we're not in Schenectady County, they offered us this opportunity as well. And even though we're not in Schenectady County, they offered us this opportunity as well. After weighing a variety of options, the Times Union Center, multi-drive-in, et cetera, Mr. Piscatelli and I talked on Friday and decided this was going to be the way to go. So we'll be hosting graduation at SCCC on Friday, June 25th. The ceremony will take place in a large parking area adjacent to the college. Graduates will be seated in one area with a giant screen behind, and their parents will be behind the graduates. So there's lots of work to do to organize and coordinate all of this, but we are really happy to have made a decision, and now we can work toward it. I'm happy to take any questions on that or to hand them off to Mr. Piscatelli. Are there any questions? All right. My last item is a big one. I wanted to provide the board with an opportunity to talk about the proposal we have been discussing now for years around changing school start time. And I invited both Mr. Lester and Mr. Piscatelli to be here. Both of them are members of the School Start Time Task Force. And that task force met back on April 20th to really think through some of the questions, comments, and concerns that we heard from our community through public comment and/or the thought exchange about the proposed changes to start time. So I think if you can forbear this, I have a couple slides just to kind of capture where we all landed. And that may refresh everybody's memory on what we're working on. So I'm going to take a second here and pull them up. I think. So I'm going to talk fast. This is a follow-up to our discussion with the Start Time Task Force. And I just, I'm not going to go through all of these, but I just wanted to remind everybody that a lot of research is behind this work. And our subcommittee of the task force who did research shared some of this information. I also shared it with everyone on the night of the budget presentation. Here's some more information about recommended sleep duration for adolescents. And there are some benefits of adequate adolescent sleep. We got some feedback that maybe the research wasn't as recent, but we just have a new recently released research study on this very topic showing similar results from the Journal of Sleep. So I just wanted to remind everyone about that. And then there are a number of impacts for insufficient sleep that are both medical and mental and academic and cognitive. So, and then we had done a little research on our own students to see just how much sleep they report getting each night, and we asked both parents and students. So what I'd like to do now is kind of show you where we landed after about a two-hour conversation with the Start Time Task Force. And Rebecca, I'm going to give you credit for these three slides because you made the recommendation in that meeting that we kind of show before COVID what we're currently doing in the proposed for each of the levels. So these proposed times are a follow-up to the feedback that we received from many. So I'll just let everyone take a moment to look at that. You can see our pre-COVID schedule for elementary. You can see the two blue areas are the K2 and 3, 4, start and end times that we're using right now. And then the proposed at the elementary level is a 7:45 start, a 7:30 drop, a 1:50 end time, and a 2:45 late bus. And I just want to point out that all of these times are student day times. They are not teacher day times. However, all of those teacher times would be crafted so they are within our contractual obligations for that day, for the workday. Here's middle. As you can see, before COVID, we had 8:45 start, 8:35 drop, 3:25 end, and a 4:05 late bus. You can see the blue for what we're currently doing this year. And then the proposed, and this was the result of a lot of conversation about how to make the middle school day shorter. We have a 9:05 start, an 8:55 drop, a 3:31 end, and a 4:05 late bus. So that is consistent with before. And then late, last but not least, is the high school. 7:30 start, 7:05 drop, 2:25 end, and a 3:25 late bus. And then our very late day that we're living through now, and then proposed is an 8:20 start, an 8:15 drop, a 2:57 end, and a 3:45 late bus. And here we put it all together. So you get a sense of how the day would unfold. So I think that's all I have there. I'm going to stop sharing and open to questions or comments. I know I sent you all of the materials that went to the task force, so you have many, many, many attachments. I'm not going to go through all of those. So questions, thoughts? Rebecca?
Thank you for sharing that, Marie. I was just curious, the task force, we had talked about like, I'm blanking on what the phrase we called it for the high school, like a 25-minute to a 30-minute catch-up time or something in every single day where students could get instruction?
We did. Mike, you want to jump in on that one? Mike Lester? Mike Piscatelli, sorry.
Yeah, Rebecca, we were talking about Dutchman Connection time. It was like a time period built into the school day. Right now, that's something that would have to be negotiated with our burning unit. So at this point, that's not part of the proposals at this point because we haven't settled on anything with that.
Gloria?
I was wondering if Mike Lester could talk a little bit about, has there been any thought about that early morning time? Since parents will be heading to work and middle school kids might be being dropped off a lot earlier than would be required?
Yeah, thanks, Gloria. We are potentially looking at changing or adding some morning programming if the community need presents itself. For those of you who remember or don't know, we used to have the cafeteria open starting at about 7:30 for students who basically started their day an hour sitting in the cafeteria. And for those of you who know secondary students, specifically middle school students, I don't necessarily know if that's the best way to start their day, sitting in the cafeteria with 150 other kids, and quite often, they're on their cell phone. So I'm looking at providing some options for some high-interest activities, maybe 45 minutes, five days a week, and utilizing potentially some of those federal funds to create some programming for kids that they can sign up for. I'd rather have students who come to the building because of childcare constraints. I'd rather have them in some high-interest activities and some programming as opposed to sitting in the cafeteria. So that's what I'd like to do. I have some proposals together in terms of what the cost would be, in terms of some current rates that are available for compensating some teachers. So this spring, we have a model already that we're doing. We have a homework help club that we're doing in the morning. So I think we would try to replicate that pretty similarly. And I would work with faculty and staff, obviously, to determine what those activities will look like. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. That's exactly what I was hoping.
I don't have a question, but I just want to, I think that's a great idea, especially using those funds to help support any, especially reading that people have written about and other things that people are concerned about was re-engaging kids back in school. So that would be great, way to use that money.
Blanca?
I just wanted to say thank you because you obviously worked really hard on that, Mr. Lester, and at all, everybody involved. It looks like a lot of thought and a lot of work went into this, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Blanca.
So we really need direction. The the rub to all of this is all about time. And if, in fact, we're going to make a transition, well, we have to make a transition no matter what because we're not going to have 10-10 start times in the fall. So we really do need some direction because our transportation department has homework to do to fine-tune this and get it ready for September. Gloria?
Well, obviously, we've been discussing this a number of times, so it's not new to all of us. I guess from my point of view, I'm wondering if we could, as a board, act on it tonight? And because I know transportation is going to have to get started on this. I mean, this is going to be massive to put a schedule together. I'm wondering if we can, could the board, would the board be willing to approve these suggestions tonight and so that you can get started?
I think we should, Gloria, like, thinking for myself. I think it makes sense to decide tonight. I mean, time is of the essence.
Barbara?
I think we should put a resolution on the floor to go ahead with the plan, you know, as shared with us. And I don't know if we need the formality of another resolution, you know, sort of overriding that you don't vote on the resolution the same day that is proposed, even though we've talked about this for years. So I'd make the resolution that we go ahead with the plan for the later start time for kids come next year. And that would have to be suspended.
I second.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I think it's a good idea and that we ought to get to work on knowing how long we've spent just figuring these things out. It's also going to be a long time figuring out buses and transportation. So it's fine with me to do it tonight.
The process be the resolution now to override our requirement, I forget what the terminology would be, and then vote on the resolution itself?
To suspend the rules, kind of thing?
That's right. I think we want to take that resolution, that we suspend rules, that we can vote on it tonight. And that one needs a second.
I second.
Okay, so we'll take a vote on suspend and just deciding to suspend the rules. So all in favor? If you find the rules to vote on the proposition? I don't see everybody, so is it in there? Office 9-0. Can you, if you're not speaking, can you mute yourself? Thank you.
Kelly, did you have a comment?
Yeah, does approving the propositions tonight, or does it require further discussion with the teachers' union currently? I'm just wondering how that affects, I may have missed it. I'm just wondering how it affects their negotiations or if it affects their contract at all.
So Kelly, the strict starting and end times that I shared with you tonight do not impact any contractual areas. We would build the teacher's school day around the current negotiated length of day, which is seven hours and 45 minutes. Our contract doesn't specify the start and end time of the day. So we would work to build a seven-hour and 45-minute day for our teachers. To Rebecca's point, the idea that the high school cabinet talked about with this Dutchman Connection does not match exactly with the language in the contract around teachers' high school workday. So that would require us to do some negotiation, which will take some time. So I think the idea is worth pursuing. But I don't know that it's reasonable to think we could pull it off for September, you know, given all of the time constraints that we have. So as presented tonight, we're within the parameters of our negotiated contract.
I know we're going to vote. I just wanted to add that I think because we're not going to keep the COVID start times anyways, this is a great time to make that adjustment. And obviously, there's been research at the district level for this, I think for two years at least. So this seems like an appropriate time. Barb?
Just wanted to say that the Dutchman Connection that Michael came up with would give each child the opportunity every day to meet with the teacher. And I'm sure we will really, really try to get that in because it really answers a lot of the questions that some of the people in the thought exchange had, you know, had mentioned. And so we can proceed without that, but that is sort of like an ideal situation if we can get it.
All right, so if nobody else has any comments or questions, I think we can go ahead and vote, right? Do we vote? Oh, go ahead, Dr. Wiles.
Seema, I just want to thank the members of the task force. That group, it's close to 40 people, met for two years. There were subcommittees that met separate and apart. And honestly, it was one of the hardest-working committees I've ever worked with in my entire career. So I just want to recognize that group of people who then came back, you know, mid-pandemic in order to finish this work. So I want to just thank them.
Yeah, thank you to all of those people. I know it's been more than a year, and they still stayed committed to this. So this is awesome. So we'll just take a vote then on the proposed start times that were shared earlier. So all in favor? The passes 9-0? Is done? Some people are probably cheering for this, so go ahead, celebrate.
This is very exciting.
I want to also thank Mike Piscatelli and Mike Lester. And I also want to send them off to get some rest. Thank you both for your help and your willingness to be here tonight. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you. Is that all you have, Dr. Wiles, in your agenda?
That is plenty, yes.
Before we move on, oh, actually, I had something that I wanted to put in the chat. I apologize. I forgot to ask because my agenda wasn't loading. I didn't know if there were any plans for, or if you could talk to the 5th grade and 8th grade moving up celebrations? Because I think those parents are also wondering.
So the middle school, I'll work my way down. The middle school just sent out a survey to students and parents asking them about preferences for either a virtual or in-person moving up ceremony. And I don't think all the results are in, but they are leaning toward an in-person event. And they'll need to do it in probably three sections in order to meet the space requirements. It'll likely be outside. Those details are still getting flushed out. The five elementary buildings are all doing something slightly different. Those plans are still in the works. I've asked them all to make sure they are consistent in following the health and safety guidelines. But we have a couple schools who are looking at doing an event at Farnsworth Middle School. We have a couple who are looking at doing events at their homeschool. And then one that's looking at hosting their event at Bozenkill Park. So that's where we're leaning. that's where we're leaning. I think I'll be getting ahead of myself if I say much more until they have their plans finalized, but they will all be in person. And the middle school, they're still working through it.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Blanca, did you have your hand up before? No?
I did, but I put it down. I was just going to thank Rebecca for providing that research and that information to back up the later school start times.
Thank you. It was a whole committee.
All right, so we'll move on on our agenda. I think it's loading right now, so I'll go for while it's loading. Board president information, and thank you, Dr. Wiles, for updating on all of those items, that big list, important ones. Letter A are the NISBA Reference, the Resolution Kit. So there is a attachment there if you're interested in creating a resolution that basically talks about the process of how to do that. So you can read that on your, on your own time. And if you want to write a resolution, I think there's people who are probably spend time at NISBA going through that process too, so you can talk to them about it as well. Letter B is voter registration required for the May eighteenth vote, and I will just read through this loads. I think I took a screenshot. Is anyone else having trouble or just me? It's not loading. I feel like the site might be crashing. I feel like everybody's paying attention to the start time and maybe that's.
No, mine's not loading at all.
Okay.
Nothing.
I took a screenshot of the vote and a couple of things, so I will go ahead and read about the voter registration. This is right, yeah. The public vote on the school budget and Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Voter registration is required in Gildan School District. To vote, you must be eighteen years old, a U.S. citizen, and a resident of the Gildan School District for at least thirty days prior to the vote. If you are not registered with the school district or Albany County Board of Elections, you must do so prior to the vote. You may register with Albany County Board of Elections, and there's a link provided there or at the DMV. The district has established three registration dates for residents to vote at the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one budget vote and election. You may register anytime between eight-thirty and two-thirty at one of the elementary schools, or from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM at the district office on the following dates. Thursday, May sixth, Monday, May tenth, and Tuesday, May eleventh. If you are not sure at which elementary school to vote, please refer to our webpage link, Budget and Taxes, and use the link that drops down, Voter Eligibility and Absentee Ballots. You can see if you're registered and where you are scheduled to vote for the elections. Mine's still not loading, so I'm going to go for my phone. Next item is upcoming Board of Election, of Educational Election. The deadline for Board of Education candidates to return their completed petition was April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. There are three seats, and each of the three seats are for a three-year term of office. The names of the candidates and their order on the ballot will be as follows. Blanca Gonzalez Parker, Nathan Sabrin, Seema Rivera, Luciano Alonso. Candidates do not run for a specific seat on the board. From the candidates, the individuals with the three highest vote totals will be elected. The seats are for a three-year term of office, July first, two thousand twenty-one, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, so any questions about any of those items? I feel like this is the first time in a while. They're just three regular terms. Couldn't keep up for a while, so. All right, so we'll move on to action items, and I'll head it back to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. First item this evening is a service agreement with CDB Connections for the provision of programs and services for students with disabilities.
Hey, can I have a motion to approve the service agreement? Kelly, second, Gloria. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Passes nine zero?
Next is an internship agreement with SUNY Cortland.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement? Barb, second, Gloria. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Passes nine zero?
Next is the approval of an agreement with Questar Three to conduct annual internal audit services in accordance with New York State Comptroller's requirements, and this is being recommended by the Audit Committee.
Can I have a motion to approve the audit purposes? Ben, second, Blanca. Any questions? All in favor? It passes nine zero?
Next is an emergency preparedness transportation service agreement with Theresian House for their residents and staff should an emergency require assistance.
Can I have a motion to approve the emergency relocation agreement? Gloria, second, Rebecca. Any questions about this? All in favor? The motion passes nine zero?
Next is a resolution to canvass affidavit balance for the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one budget referendum.
Can I, can I have a motion to approve the agreement? Sorry. Oh, Kelly, second, Gloria. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? It passes nine zero?
Next is a resolution regarding acceptance of eminent domain just compensation for school district property. This is related to the sidewalk expansion from Hamilton Square up to the Gildan Public Library. The school district owns the majority of land that the library sits on, and therefore, we would be the entity that would receive the eminent domain compensation.
Hey, can I have a motion to approve the acceptance of the eminent domain? Gloria, second, Blanca. Any questions about this? All in favor? Passes nine zero?
Next is Key Club Leadership Scholarship Establishment. And that would be a scholarship to a male and female senior who have been an active member of Key Club all four years ago in High School and have held the position of either president, treasurer, or secretary.
Can I have a motion to approve the leadership scholarship? Rebecca, second, Barb. Any questions? All in favor? Passes nine zero?
And then finally this evening, I'm pleased to report that we have a donation. It's a monetary donation from the Knights of Columbus for various programs within the school district that will assist underserved students.
Can I have a motion to approve, to accept the donation? Ben, second, Judy. Any questions? Just thank you the group for the donation? All in favor? It passes nine zero? And that is it. Thank you, Neil. Next on the agenda, we have Board President Action. I have one item listed there, the appointment of election workers for the May eighteenth budget vote and election. Gloria, is your agenda open to read that?
Let me see. It's spinning. It takes a minute.
One's just been skipped.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, thank.
Do you need me to read the names?
Um, yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay, recommend the appointment following individuals to serve as election workers for May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one budget vote and election. Poll workers, Trish Blizzard, Linda Chabati, Frank Camiso, Castilia Camiso, Karen Garrity, Nancy Galen, Thomas Persons, Matthew Pruskowski, Linda Russo, Wesley Smith, Linda Smith, Stephanie Plas, Cannon Sumi, Dorothy Tompkins, Christine Tucker, Carol Vecchione, Pamela Ventreska, William Nguyen, Joshua Nguyen. Voting machine inspectors, Scott Clark, Shannon Durr, Patty McCardle, Diane Prukowski, David Schaefer. Assistant inspectors, Juliana Kopola, Patricia Haldman, Kathleen Hodges, Linda Klein, Mary Schmitz, Judy Stevens, Janet Tully Kuzman, Diane Warner, Diane Young, Calia Pe Servos. And chief inspectors, Mary Ann Canestrasi, Donna Jozinski, Nicole Kennedy, Tammy McGill, Rachel Preston, Kaylee Retell, Arthur Swanson, Jennifer Thomas, and I apologize if I said your name wrong.
Thank you, Gloria, for reading them. Can I have a motion to approve the appointment of election workers? Kelly, second, Judy. Any questions? All in favor? Motion passes nine zero? Thank you. Thank you, Gloria, for reading that. Next, we have Board Committee Reports. I'll start with Business Practices.
Cliff covered pretty well our last Business Practices meeting, and we do not have a meeting scheduled, but I assume there will be one coming as he develops the plans along with the people in the office.
Thank you, Judy. Communications?
You're muted, Gloria.
I can't get that straight. Yes, we met on April fourteenth, and our first item on the agenda was the discussion of community engagement for the twenty-one-twenty-two budget. We reviewed proposed activities to engage and inform the community, and it was approved by the Board on April thirteenth. They included things like use of an extra-large budget postcard mailed to residents rather than a full multi-page newsletter, information on the website to provide further details about what's included in the budget, information on the website about the candidates running for the Board, creation of a one-page summary of the Board, of the Budget Board elections to share with PTAs, Board Presidents writing a letter, the Board President writing a letter to the editor at the enterprise, and use of electronic signs at FMS and GHS to remind the community to participate in the budget vote and election. Second item on the agenda was Equity, Diversity, and Inclusivity on our webpage. The committee took an initial look at the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusivity page on our website. A tab for the page was recently added for the case of finding information, for the ease of finding information. Amy Perrot, who worked with the Subcommittee of the Equity and Diversity Committee, shared the page is a starting point and that the Subcommittee will continue to recommend content. I recommended that many eyes look at the content to be sure that that we are inclusive of the many perspectives. Rebecca noted that from her perspective, the links on the page led to several excellent resources and some good ideas. Some ideas from the site that was shared, organizing resources by age, asking librarians for assistance with identifying age-appropriate books, to include stats about our community and school district, the About Us section, and a Subcommittee should, that Subcommittee should vet sources and share with the full committee before posting. So those were our suggestions. We decided to postpone the school start time discussion since the committee was about to meet. The task force was going to follow up. And we have not scheduled another meeting yet.
Great, thank you, Gloria. Next, Audit, Ben?
The Audit Committee has not met since our last Board meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for May twelfth at eight AM.
And Policy, Barb? Thank you, Ben.
We have a meeting scheduled for Thursday at six-thirty, the thirteenth of May.
Thank you, Barb. And Equity and Diversity, Kelly? You're muted, Kelly.
Sorry, I thought I hit the button. We had a meeting on the twenty-first of April. Our work is still revolving around definitions currently and getting organized still with a little bit of education piece for Board members, the committee members. We have our next meeting on the twenty-sixth of May at seven PM, and it will be livestreamed.
Thank you, Kelly. I was just going to add from that committee meeting, there was a presentation from the high school on the, from the Anti-Racism Committee, and that was really helpful, I think, to a lot of people to see what's already been happening at the district.
All right, so Marie went through some, some of the district stuff too as well. I didn't have my notes up too, but it was a really good, it was a really good meeting if people are interested.
It was a long, good discussion. So those are all the committee reports. I'll go to public comment number two. I just have those two right now. Linda, did anybody write anymore? No? Okay. So Gloria, I can, I can read the two.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Oh, here we go. Public comment number one for public comment number two. "I am writing in support of the Diversity and Equity Committee and the proposed work towards achieving a more diverse, equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist learning environment in Gildan Central School District schools. I'm a parent of two children in this school district and a resident of Gildan for the last seven years. In that time, our family has been in the Gildan community and schools. Our family has unfortunately been witness and subject to comments, experiences, and situations that make it clear that racism is present in our community and schools. I strongly believe that we have to support the work proposed by this committee to combat all aspects of ignorance, bigotry, and racism over or veiled, so we can over or veil, so we can give our children a more just, inclusive, and equitable society where all our children can thrive and learn to be better members of society. I have been told that there has been pushback from some community members against the committee. How can this sow in the twenty-first century? These negative attitudes are evidence that the work of this committee is very much needed. We must give the next generation a better community and a more equitable, inclusive schools. All of our children stand to benefit from learning to live and work in a diverse, multiracial, multicultural, multilingual world because that is what the real world is like. I thank the D and E committee members for their essential work. They are spearheading to create a more diverse, equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist environment for the children and families of the Gildan Central School District. Sincerely, Antonio Martinez Tounion." And I apologize if I mispronounced that. And the last public comment. "My family and I support the work and mission of the Gildan Central School District's Equity and Diversity Committee. The events of the past year, and especially the protests surrounding the Black Lives Matter movement, have brought issues of racial injustices in the legal system to the forefront of our nation's eyes. They have highlighted how we, individuals, workplaces, schools, universities, et cetera, each need to do our utmost to upend culturally insensitive and downright racist policies ingrained into our societal systems. It is so important to be proactive in fighting systemic racism because sitting back and doing nothing is not a viable strategy. One of the best places to learn in fighting systemic racism, creating safe spaces for people of color and healing our communities, is through education, teaching our children what it means to be inclusive of everyone. This is why I wholeheartedly support the Equity and Diversity Committee in the Gildan Central School District. Thank you, Charlene Fuel." Okay, and next we have Board Issues, Ideas, and Sharing. I just want to add for all of the, the public comments there that that we'll have a response at the, at the very least that who is who is going to be talking about it, or who's going to be responding to you, or at the least that we have acknowledged that and kind of give you an update as to where we are. Just have to gather them together. Ben?
So I have some remarks that I prepared. So I thank you all in advance for your, your patience. When I was a student in Gildan, I had the great privilege to explore and argue for heterodox ideas and opinions. For example, in my AP English class, I one night posted a short essay on the class website arguing in favor of the right of private businesses to discriminate against homosexuals as a bill pending before the Arizona Legislature at the time proposed to legalize on religious grounds. Some of my classmates responded with their own counterarguments on the class website, and then the next day, the entire class had an in-person discussion of the issue from which I believe we all left with more respect and understanding for each other and our respective arguments. At our last meeting, mixed with some brief remarks about, quote, "doing the work", a somewhat rhetorical question was asked, quote, "Why is the existence of this work being perceived as a threat?", end quote. Despite the apparently rhetorical nature of the question, however, I decided to consider it seriously. What are these people worried about? What am I worried about about this DEI push? And what am I due to? The answer for me personally is uniformity and intolerance in the name of DEI. My fear is that someday soon, the expression and discussion of heterodox beliefs and theories, like what happened in my AP English class, will no longer be tolerated for fear of making some students feel alienated. My fear is that students like me will no longer be free to be true to their beliefs in speech and in action. in speech and in action. I will not pretend that the issue of racism generally and the particular ideology behind the new wave of anti-racism that swept the nation this year does not continue to be hotly and legitimately debated all over the country, that bills seeking to prohibit race essentialism and neo-segregation or to fund those things are not currently being considered by dozens of state legislatures. I assume that you all are following some of these stories and are aware of the potential abuses of this ideology. So I will highlight just one example, the case of Clark, the Democracy Prep Charter School, in which the plaintiff alleges that her biracial son was asked to label himself and others as oppressors and to quote, "undo and unlearn his beliefs, attitudes, and behaviors that stem from oppression." End quote. When the boy refused, the school threatened to fail him in the class, which might have jeopardized his ability to graduate, and his mother consequently brought suit. Now, from my perspective, forcing a student to affirm a belief that he and his parents find objectionable and unlearn his own could not be further from celebrating diversity or practicing inclusion. It's interesting to note that already in our own community, those who support the DEI initiatives like the Diversity and Equity Committee and the New Equity Officer provide their comments publicly while those parents, teachers, and community members who questioned these initiatives have almost always contacted us privately. They are scared of being called racists, first because racism is repugnant to them, and second because in our allegedly white supremacist society, the mere accusation of racism can sometimes lose someone their job. It's also interesting to know, I think, that this year several board members have been made to feel unwelcome on this board, not because of differences of opinion or even the ire received from some members of the public, but because of specific directed actions by other board members, board members preaching diversity and inclusion. In other words, those of us with divergent opinions on these DEI questions and different perspectives on the solutions, regardless of where we find ourselves, feel unwelcome to join district conversations on these issues for fear, not just of pushback, but of blowback. Is this what we mean by inclusion? If it is, do we wonder why there is pushback? Our first priority, I think, as a district is to ensure that our students are physically safe in school. Just as important, I think, for an institution of learning, is ensuring that students are safe to explore ideas in school, including ideas which run counter to the prevailing narrative, as so many of mine once did. I think that this continues to be the case in Gilderlin today. And it is my hope that it will always remain so and that we can set an example for our students to follow by welcoming heterodox opinions, by not insulting or denouncing our friends and neighbors, and by engaging in dialogue in good faith. Assuming that those who disagree with some of our specific views around DEI are opposed to equity, diversity, and inclusion as such, or are uneducated, or are racist, is bad faith. I feel that such assumptions have been made far too often. I too support the work of the Diversity and Equity Committee and its members who are seeking the betterment of all of our students. But I acknowledge that the work remains mostly undefined and I understand how this work can potentially go wrong, how it can in fact pose a threat to some people, and I refuse to consider these people's concerns with anything less than good faith. I do not believe that they are worried by the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion, but by what we might mean by that phrase. And their questions and concerns are not, as some have suggested tonight, reason to push forward even harder without listening to and recognizing these concerns. In gathering feedback on these remarks, multiple individuals expressed support for my comments but fear for me in sharing them. In reply, I encourage all members of our community, no matter your thoughts on this work, do not be scared to share your thoughts, to join us in this work so that we can listen to and learn from you and ensure that the work goes right. Thank you.
I just wanna respond quickly because I think some of the comments were addressed towards me and I didn't prepare anything. But I am also open to diverse and inclusive opinions, divergent opinions, et cetera, and far, you know, far-reaching variations of opinions, et cetera, except when it becomes hateful. And so what we've seen from students and messages so far from the community and from alumni and current students has been hateful rhetoric, hateful acts, and that's where I'm saying that our first duty is to protect and take care of our students. And so for me, a lot of this, I know some people, I guess, view anti-racism work as an attack, but I think the only other, the only other option is racism and that's just not gonna be an option, at least in my view, that as long as, you know, I'm involved in any kind of school that I will want to strive to fight to rid of racism. And yes, the work is not clearly defined, but when we're talking about this and then the next day, we still hear that, we continuously hear of racist acts at school, to me, that says everything. And obviously from the public comments tonight, earlier and the later ones, there is a strong support in the community. And I can't, I really can't speak for people who supposedly exist out there and don't write. That's the beauty of public comment, is to write and say what you think. If you don't think that you're a racist and you strongly believe in your convictions, then write a public comment and put your name to it so we can, you know, listen to what your comments are. I mean, I heard from a lot of people that I don't know tonight that seem like they are in support of it. So again, I didn't prepare anything, but I just wanted to add that in response. Oh Barb?
Yeah, obviously.
You're muted Barb.
This evening, obviously, I was the subject of an attack that basically making claim to things that I supposedly said, which if you read the transcript of what I actually said, nowhere were those things mentioned. My argumentation for the DEI position was simply, number one, this is the first time we've ever been asked to put in a new administrative position without a clearly defined job description, without a clearly defined need. Now, we had set up the DEI committee, which I'm glad to be part of. It's a great learning experience. But I have seen what we have done as a result of the young ladies that phoned into us. We've already added two classes at the high school regarding black history. Marie went over in the last Diversity Committee meeting, long before any of this became a topic of discussion this past summer, all the different professional development that the district has offered to teachers so that they can treat each child so that that child has the potential to reach their maximum potential. We had people from the Pride Center come in, you know, and share their knowledge with the teachers. We had people from Syracuse University come multiple times for including our disabled students and try to bring them into a normal classroom setting. We had a number of visits from a diversity educator from Columbia University that shared with our, with our, you know, our staff, some of the problems that have been seen in other districts. You know, we keep hearing mentions of all these terrible things that have happened in our school district. And yet, if something happens to your child, the first thing that should happen is that you share that horrendous happening. That should work its way up the system and, you know, we should hear about it. And I think since Marie's been here, particularly since the young lady's phone call, we have been kept up to date. Many of these things are children being children. When they use foul language, when they denigrate another race, when they call someone retarded, when they say something bad about a child that's from China or some other place. Our teachers are wildly quipped to take that moment as a learning moment or as a teaching moment. And for me, it was a budgetary issue because I really think our school district has done so much to address these issues. And, you know, until this equity audit is done and I can see in black and white all these supposedly multiple instances of racism, and by the way, James Clyburn, the highest ranking member of the US Congress, the other day came forward and said, "This is not a racist nation." And what all the people that you say should be writing, I agree with Ben. These people are so fearful because they have had life experience that if they even question DEI, they've lost their jobs, they've lost their livelihoods. And there is that fear because there is this tornado that has swept the nation, that critical race theory, which is now being pushed by the current administration, which basically says, and it's in their literature, I'm not making this up, that all white people are inherently racist whether you know it or not, that white children are oppressors to their fellow classmates, that these horrendous things where we're not teaching children to love each other, respect each other, and reach for the stars. I just felt very comfortable that in Gilderlin, we have given every child, and that's been my whole goal in serving, the opportunity to reach their maximum potential. And I am just so proud of what our teachers have done over the years. Yes, are there instances of stupidity in young people? Yes. Sometimes as an adult, not act properly? Yes. But again, our administration with their current staff, not an additional hundred thousand dollar plus administrator, which our community had basically told us that they didn't want more administrators, they have achieved wonderful things. And, and as I said, I want every student to feel safe. I want every student to feel respected, every student to feel comfortable. We know that from research, that if they don't, they can't learn. And so, you know, in response to the critics that say that, you know, we're torpedoing or we're trying to torpedo this committee, I'd say no. There are many people on here that sincerely want all those things for kids. And we're not going to just restrict it to racist issues. We're gonna look at the poor, we're gonna look at the disabled, we're gonna look at the foreign student that's learning English. All these are gonna be under the radar, but that work hasn't been done yet. Where the deficiencies are, when we looked at the ESSA data, you know, the things that struck out to us was the poor, the minorities were lacking in their gains, and we wanted to do something about it. But as I said, I was very comfortable with what we had been doing and, you know, was certainly open to the need, if there was one in next year's budget, you know, for someone to take on that role. But when I had seen that we had made all these, this progress, that that's why I didn't support the diversity educator. Because, as I said, to me, you know, from a scientific point, that's my background, show me, show me where the need is in that we can do it with our current staff. So, you know, for those that read into my comments that, you know, I was a racist and that I, I thought people, women of color weren't bright enough to, to take on leadership roles, none of that was ever said. And if you look at the documentation and you read it, you'll not see any of those words that were mentioned in a number of those letters. So, you know, I apologize to those people that, that my words didn't ring true to them. But as I said, I am totally on board with providing every kid in this district with whatever tools they need to become successful and to provide our teachers with whatever tools they need to reach out to every student and help that student. We've often talked about mentoring, that we wanna see that each child in our district has at least one adult that they can feel comfortable with. And, you know, I'd like to see that going forward. Going back many, many years, probably fifteen years now, you know, I was very instrumental in helping with the bullying committee that the board formed because we were saying, you know, actual cases where bullying was affecting kids. And as a board, you know, we created this committee, we brought in the Alvea's method and, you know, did some great work there. Bullying is never going to end, it's never going to stop, but we can do everything that we can to stymie it to the degree possible. So again, you know, as Ben sort of pointed out, you know, we can have our differences. And we can respect each other's opinions and continue to have the dialogue. But right now, that, what I'm hearing from the letters and all, they sort of discount Martin Luther King's idea that I grew up with, that, you know, you judge a person on the basis of their character, not on their skin color. And any employee that we hire, I want to have that employee, no matter what their gender, no matter, you know, what their racial profile or ethnicity is, to know that they were hired because they were the best candidate for their job. Now, in looking at the data, we know that kids are helped if they have role models. We are very low on the line in the number of male teachers that we have in our district. We are low on the line of people of color. So if you have two candidates that are equally qualified and, you know, you wanna boost your male numbers or your people of color numbers, I have no problem with that. My argument is, I want everybody that is hired to know that they were hired because they were the best person for their job. And, and as I said, I've been here all these years so that kids can have a great education, every single kid, and, you know, I just hope people realize that. Thanks Seema.
I just have, I just wanna respond to, again, I didn't prepare anything, but just two things. One is, if we say things in public, people respond, in public comment or an email, and this has happened to me, this is part of being in a, in a position that's a public position. So, you know, if you put it out there, you're gonna have to accept what comes back. The second piece is that, I just think Barb, that it would be really helpful for you to stop and think that your experience may be very different from other people's experiences that have written in. And so I just want you to maybe stop and think that some of the language you use, and people have written about this, have offended people, have upset people. And, you know, you are entitled to feel however you want, but that doesn't deny the people on the other end. That is how they felt by the language that you've used, by things that you've said. And it will be, I think, I think you would, you would do, you know, do you more good to stop and think about how people that are writing to you are living a different life than you are and they're living a different experience, they're having a different experience than you're having. And when you say these things, you're kind of denying that, you know, that what they've, you know, their existence, what they've, what they've experienced. And some of the language that you've used, I think part of that work can be, part of that stuff can be worked on in DEI. Like I just wrote in the chat, you, cause you referred to a classroom as normal. And so what does that mean for the students who are not, they're abnormal? I mean, this is, I know that some of this are nuanced and maybe they're just not the, some of it is just language and discourse, but that matters, that matters to people. Words matter to people. And you say these things and you accept people, and I just want you to stop and think that, that what you say impacts people and that's why they're writing in.
I just have a question Seema. If, if a child is having a problem in our school district, what impedes that parent from sharing that problem with the, with the administration? I don't know, any principal that we currently have, you know, on staff or our superintendent that would not take that complaint seriously? or our superintendent that would not take that complaint seriously. We hear all these nebulous incidences, but have they actually been brought forth so that they can be dealt with? Because if any of those things, you know, that you're sharing, that matters. But they have to bring them forward so that our very well-intentioned teachers and administrators can deal with the issue. That's my problem. I mean, when we had the bullying incident, people actually came forward and they said, "Hey, my kid has been bullied and X, Y, and Z happened", and the administrators, you know, took action. In some cases, they didn't take enough action, according to parents, but, you know, they addressed the issue. So, I guess that's what I'm having troubles dealing with. If all these supposedly racist incidents are happening in our school district, why aren't our administrators hearing about them? And if they're hearing about them and the parents then don't feel good about what they're getting feedback, we should be hearing about it in a direct letter to you or whatever, saying, "Hey, my child was hurt X, Y, and Z." And...
Barb, it's not supposedly racist. Like, we have gotten letters from people whose kids that racial epithets were said toward their kid, and then they say something to us. I'm not just talking about dealing with discipline issues. I think what the committee, or at least one of the goals of the committee, is to create a school environment where we're being proactive, right? That so less of these incidences occur. Right, we're not going to completely stomp out all bullying, all race, like, we're not going to do all of that. We can't do all of that. But we can create a better environment, and I think we owe that to the students. They've been telling us over and over that they're experiencing these things. And so, I think as a district, this is long overdue. You know, I went to Gilderlin and there were racist incidents then, and there continues to be. And there's never been, I think I said this before, one concerted effort to discuss this, to talk about all of diversity and equity. And bullying is one thing, but this is more specific and clearly from everybody who's been writing in and people who've been writing to us are saying that it's not enough. Their kids are still experiencing that. It's not supposedly.
Well, again, you mentioned when you were in school, what racist incidents happened, the administration didn't deal with them, and what incidences has happened this year? We know of one where a racial epithet, well, wasn't actually, was permission for one, was asked for by a third grader. And there may be others that we haven't heard about. But my problem is bring them forth. We just keep hearing about all these supposed racial incidences in this terrible Gilderlin community. We really need to hear about them directly, individually, in order to deal with them. It's not some amorphous gel out there that, you know, that we can attack until these incidences are actually shared so that our administration can deal with them or our teachers can deal with them. And if the parent is not satisfied, then a letter to you or to the board or whatever, you know, for further investigation. But as I said, I'm willing to do whatever work, and you know downright well that I care about all kids. And but as I said, I just really have to grapple with not knowing particular instances of racism here in our school district that we haven't dealt with. That's my problem.
Kelly, have your hand raised?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I don't think you're going to find a lot of big, massive incidences. I think you're going to find little incidences of microaggressions, of things that, what am I going to bring up a conversation with the superintendent? Because, you know, there was one racial slur or one particular incidence? Like, I think what people are getting at is it's micro. It's in the institution. It's, I think, it's just things that you don't even know about that you and I wouldn't really even recognize as an incident because we haven't had that experience. So, I think, like, it's the little tiny things that add up, and I don't think it's really hard to pinpoint exact issues and exact incidences at exact times that went through the chain of command that didn't get addressed. I think that's a lot to ask. So, I'm fully in support of this work, obviously, but I think that's what you're going to find more than, I think you're going to find pinpointed incidences. I don't know what you want. Do you want one? Do you want 10? Do you want, what's your standard of knowing that this exists? So, I'm just going to leave it at that. Thanks.
Gloria?
I have to agree with Kelly there in terms of, you know, trying to put together a list. I mean, we've heard it, it's popped its head up, it's roared its head many times. I mean, we had the incident a couple of years ago where a parent stood up at a public meeting and left the school district eventually over this kind of an issue. It's insidious, it's part of our systems, and sometimes it's even hard for people who don't, can't recognize it, to see it, even if it's brought to their attention. So, I think we need to listen to people in a different way, not just say, "Give me a list" or "Give me a time, give me a date". We need to listen how people are feeling about being here and honor those feelings and give them the respect that they deserve. And that's the kind of community I want, where we can listen to each other, respect each other's feelings about what's going on in their lives and how the system is making them feel, and then move forward to correct. That's what I see that this committee is designed to do.
Are there any other board comments, issues, ideas, sharing? Alright, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Gloria? Second, Kelly, all in favor? The motion carries nine zero. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.